I can see everybody's here. If you take note, that would be awesome. Next two items on our agenda are the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Today's invocation is going to be delivered by Pastor Jeff Phyllis, and he's representing the Turning Leaf Community Church of the Nazarene. Gentlemen, if appropriate, if you're wearing a hat, if you'd please remove it. If everyone would please join with me, stand for invocation first, and then remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Pastor, where are you? There you are.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Let's pray together. Father God, we thank you that as we meet for this city council meeting tonight, we do so under your sovereignty and your direction. The weight of the responsibility to lead this city into the future is heavy, but in your strength, we can do so with confidence and integrity. Would you place your hand of protection over the citizens of Glendale for their safety, for their success? Would you put your hand of protection over our first responders? Keep them safe, return them to their families each day. We pray for your protection over this council that's gathered tonight. I pray that their love and concern for this city will be evident in the conversations that will take place. And we pray over Mayor Wires as he leads us. Continue to renew his body, equip him for the task ahead. I also pray for the family of MCSO Officer Juan Ruiz that was beaten and killed in the city of Avondale. We pray for your peace and mercy to be over that family and over the whole situation. We pray for those that are homeless, those that are under-resourced, those that are struggling mentally and physically. May you bless them and care for them, and may you give us creative ways to minister to their needs. For all this, we give you thanks, and we put our trust in you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor. Councilmember Tomachoff, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sir. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, next item is our approval of minutes of the September 28, 2021 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to those minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of September 28, 2021 voting meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, second to Councilmember Clark. To approve the minutes, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Here's eyes have it, do have it, that motion carries. Moving on to boards, commissions, and other bodies. Normally, members are nominated and then after approved, they're usually invited to come up and be sworn in. Right now, with the COVID-19 guidelines, after approved, the board and commission members will be completing their oath of office in a paper version with the city clerk's office. With that said, Councilmember Turner, have you any nominations offered for boards, commissions, and other bodies?
Yes, Mayor, I move we appoint Alicia Rubio to the bond committee for a term expiring December 31 of 2022.
Second.
That's all you got?
Yep.
Okay. So I have a motion, Councilmember Turner, second, Councilmember Tomachoff, through these citizens, this citizen to boards, commissions, and other bodies, is read by Councilmember Turner. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's eyes have it, do have it, that motion carries. Moving on to proclamations. I'll go down to the podium, and we'll do it from there. Okay, you guys are too good. So if you're curious of who these folks are that's coming in behind me, this is the Desert Young Marines. It's a local chapter of the National Young Marines Program for young men and women ages eight through high school. They focus on leadership, citizenship through the community service, self-discipline, and living a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. They had this last Saturday, 24 members at my annual Stand Up for Veterans event that I put on each and every year. And they performed, or performed, they participated in a flagline during our open ceremony that, quite honestly, was pretty phenomenal. This evening, our unit commander, Mark McCain, is here with some of the Young Marines, and they're here for what's called Red Ribbon Week. Try to say that three times real fast. I'm going to go ahead and read a proclamation, and then we'll go from there. Okay? Okay, you had a young, there she is back there, okay. Who's that?
My daughter.
What's your daughter? What's her name?
Healy.
That's Healy in the back, just got to acknowledge her. Okay.
She's a retired young marine.
She's a retired young marine? Okay, perfect. That's like an oxymoron, a retired young.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so the proclamation, sir, why don't you stand right here? Whereas communities across America have been plagued by numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there's hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marine of the Marine Corp League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. Whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas October 23 through 31 has been designated as the National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the City of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of our city council, do hereby proclaim October 23 through the 31 as Red Ribbon Week, and call upon our citizens of Glendale to join me in this special observance. That was signed by myself, the 12th day of October 2021, and our city clerk. And I'd like to give that to you, sir, and anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you and...
Come over here.
Just basically, thank you, and thank you, City of Glendale. Our unit's been here for 20 years, and we try to do this every year, different events, different cities, trying to get the information out there, and try to put the wear out there for all the citizens, and specifically the youth, to stay away from drugs. Thank you, Mayor, citizens healthy.
Good. Very good.
Thank you.[453.51][453.51][applause]
I have to tell you, the young lady has a handshake way stronger than all them guys. All right, moving on to consent agenda. Items three through 14, items on the consent agenda of routine nature. They've been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Do we have any speaker cards on any of the consent agenda items? Number 28, I think, is the only one? Correct, okay. So with that, Councilmember Clark.
Yes, Mayor.
You want it? Go ahead.
I request that we pull item 10 from consent agenda for a separate vote.
All right, perfect. So can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items three through nine, and then also 11 through 14?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve a consent agenda items three through nine and 11 through 14.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, I'm sorry. Motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Clark, to approve the consent items three through nine and 11 through 14. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's eyes have it, do have it, that motion carries. We will now proceed to the one item, item number 10. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce that, please?
Approval of Allen Ranch's Phase One Parcel F Final Platte, Application FP 21-09, located north and east of the northeast corner of Camelback Road and Citrus Road.
Mayor, I don't need a presentation.
No presentation necessary, just a separate vote, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve item number 10, Approval of Allen Ranch's Phase One.
Anybody want a second to that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Tomachoff, second, and Vice Mayor, approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm going to explain my vote. First of all, Allen Ranch is out in our new frontier area, and it is over 200 acres of residential. Typically, the council created a policy several years ago encouraging the development of industrial, commercial, and retail. Unfortunately, this project had been entitled before that policy decision was made, which explains why a residential project is coming to that area. In addition, there are multiple parcels, at least five or six different parcels. Allen Ranch tends to create 7,000, 6,000 square foot parcels, but this particular parcel F is 4,500 square foot lots, and over the years, I have come to not like 4,500 square foot lots, so I will be voting no on this particular item.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Eldama. How do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on to consent resolutions. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce items 15 through 24 by number and title?
Item 15, Resolution Number R 21-93, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a highway safety contract, Number 2022-405B-004, with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $30,000 for personnel services and employee-related expenses for the Glendale Police Department Occupant Protection Enforcement Project. Item 16, Resolution Number R 21-94, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a highway safety contract, Number 2022-PTS-029, with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $50,000 for personnel services and employee-related expenses for the Glendale Police Department Step Enforcement Project. Item 17, Resolution Number R 21-95, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a highway safety contract, Number 2022-405H-004, with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $54,500 for personnel services and employee-related expenses and materials and supplies for the Glendale Police Department Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Enforcement Project. Item 18, Resolution Number R 21-96, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a highway safety contract, Number 2022-405D-021, with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $64,968 for personnel services, employee-related expenses, and materials and supplies for the Glendale Police Department DUI Impaired Driving Enforcement Project. Item 19, Resolution Number R 21-97, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a subrecipient agreement, with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the State Homeland Security Grant Program Award in the approximate amount of $45,557 for the Glendale Police Explosive Devices Mitigation Project. Item 20, Resolution Number R 21-98, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a subrecipient agreement, with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Award in the approximate amount of $15,380 for the Glendale Police 2021 UASI TLO Sustainment. Item 21, Resolution Number R 21-99, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a subrecipient agreement, with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Award in the approximate amount of $108,942 for the Glendale Police 2021 UASI RRT Sustainment. Item 22, Resolution Number R 21-100, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a grant pass-through agreement with the City of Phoenix for the purpose of providing transit services. Item 23, Resolution Number R 21-101, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing acceptance and directing the entering into of the SGIA Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Grants and Aid Award of $11,556 from the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records Agency for library supplies, equipment, programming, or training. Item 24, Resolution Number R 21-102, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement for wired telecommunications service in the City of Glendale right-of-way with Wired Connect LLC. And that concludes the consent resolutions.
All right, thank you. You have any other speaker cards over there?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead and catch your breath there. Okay, can I get a motion to approve items 15 through 24 on the consent resolutions agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve consent resolutions 15 through 24.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Clark, to approve item... Hmm, what happened here?
15 through 24.
What's that?
15 through 24.
15 through 24 on the consent resolution. Yeah, any discussion? Hearing none? This is not a roll call vote, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's eyes have it, do have it, that motion does carry. Moving on to bids and contracts. Now, Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 25 for us, please?
Award of Request Statement of Qualifications 22-09, and Authorization to Enter Into Contracts with Benmar Solutions Inc. and Aiden S. LLC for Clean and Lean Services.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve item 25?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 25, Award of Request Statement of Qualifications 22-09, and Authorization to Enter Into a Contract with Benmar Solutions Inc. and Aiden LLC for Clean and Lean Services.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this vote? Hearing none, we'll conduct a roll call vote. Turn to Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 26? Ryan, would you come here?
Award of IFB 21-54, and Authorization to Enter Into an Agreement with Matheson Tri-Gas Inc. for the purchase of various gases for water quality.
Technical difficulties, my pen just ran out of ink. Okay, let me borrow your pen.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. We have any discussion on this? Any questions from the council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve item 26, please?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we award Invitation for Bids 21-54 and authorize the city manager to enter into the described agreement.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, explain my vote.
Go ahead.
As is my habit in practice. This is a five-year contract, and so I will be voting no.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 27?
Authorization to Enter Into a Linking Agreement with Creative Bus Sales Inc. for the purchase of buses, parts, and service.
Okay. Presentation? No, I have no speaker cards on this. Can I get a motion to approve item 27?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item number 27 as described.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Eldama, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Did I miss anybody? Okay. That motion does pass. Public hearing land development actions. I do have a speaker card on this one, if necessary. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 28 for us, please?
Thompson Thrift Annexation Application AN 225, public hearing located at the southeast corner of 99th Avenue and Northern Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report this evening is Tabitha Perry, Interim Planning Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thompson Thrift Annexation Request. Hopefully, it'll catch up with me soon. So the property is approximately 24 acres in size, and it is located at the southeast corner of 99th Avenue and Northern Avenue. The county zoning on the property is C2 for intermediate commercial, as well as the city-like zoning will be C2 commercial, general commercial. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property, if it's annexed into the city, from C2 to PAD, to allow for a mixed-use development for commercial and multifamily land uses. The site is approximately five and a half acres from City Hall. This annexation map is just to give context to where the property is located in conjunction to other property within the city, likewise to the county and the city of Peoria. This item was presented before a city council back in March 24 of 2020 in a workshop where council provided a consensus to proceed with the application. If the next public hearing date would be for November the 9th for the adoption of the annexation, followed by the entitlement process for a general plan amendment, as well as rezoning to PAD. Mayor, council, that concludes the presentation.
Okay. Public hearing is now open on item 28, Thompson Thrift Annexation Application AN 225. The public hearing located at the southeast corner, 99th Avenue and Northern. I do have a speaker card from Wendy Riddle and Barry Riddle. They're from Scottsdale. They said that they can speak if necessary on this item, and they are supportive of this. So do we have any questions from the council? Okay, Mr. and Ms. Riddle, I guess we don't need you. Okay? All right, so we have no questions. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? I have no other speaker cards. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. The next steps in the process is to finalize the adoption process of annexation of the property, which will come back to this council in a future city council voting meeting. Now, we're going to go ahead and move on to item 29. There is actually no action required tonight other than the public hearing. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 29 for us?
Sonoma Cotton Annexation AN 227, application for 36 acres located at the southeast corner of Cotton Lane and Northern Avenue.
Mayor, members of the council here again to provide staff report this evening is Tabitha Perry, Interim Planning Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Phelps. Mayor and council, this subject site is 36 acres in size, and it is located at the southeast corner of Cotton Lane and Northern Avenue. It's in the county with the zoning of planned industrial and intermediate commercial. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site to PAD to allow for a mixed-use development. Bypass all this. This is the annexation map, just to give context to what the property is surrounding. During the workshop, we presented before you a proposal for Urgis 303, which is located just to the south of the subject site before you right now. If the next steps in the process is to proceed with the adoption of the annexation, which is tentatively scheduled for October the 26th, which will also include the rezoning application. With that, it concludes the presentation.
All right, thank you. Public hearing is now open on item number 29, Sonoma Cotton Annexation AN 827, application for 36 acres located at the southeast corner of Cotton Lane and Northern Avenue. We have any questions from our council? Hearing none, I do have a card from, I believe it's Adam Ba, is that correct?
Yeah, only if necessary.
Okay, from Withy Morris. If necessary, he can come up. If not, then he's just going to stay back there and smile. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, anyone else in the room like to speak on this item? Bless you. Public hearing is now closed. The next steps in this process is to finalize the adoption process of annexing the property, which will come back to this council again in the future at a city council voting meeting. So with that, Ms. Daniels, good to see you. And I'm going to call out a friend of mine, Jen Daniels, former mayor of Gilbert. Good to see you. Okay, so we're going to move on to item number 30, ordinances. Ms. Bauer?
Ordinance number O 21-66, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a special warranty deed to accept a 0.493-plus-or-minus-acre parcel of land located at 6524 West SAC Drive in Glendale, Arizona, for a future well site, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report this evening is Jamie Chapin, Principal Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, and good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a request for city council to adopt an ordinance accepting an approximate half-acre parcel of land parcel of land located at 6524 West SAC Drive for a future city-owned well site. Mayor and council, as you may know, this is adjacent to the site that will be the Phoenix Children's Hospital. And in the middle of this site was an existing private well that the Water Services Department was aware of, and they had identified that it would be very beneficial to have a city-owned well at this location. So, we were very fortunate in that the property owners had a small parcel of land in the southeast corner of that site that really didn't benefit the development. And so, they agreed that if the city abandoned the well site for them, then they would dedicate this half-acre parcel of land to the city for the well site. So, staff is recommending acceptance of the half-acre parcel, so that when we drill the well in the future to benefit the city's water supply system. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Chapin. Any questions from our council? Seeing none. Can I get a motion for ordinance, or item number 30, ordinance 021-66?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we pass and adopt ordinance number O-21-66, and wave reading beyond the title.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to resolutions, item number 31, Resolutions R-21-103. Ms. Power?
Resolution number R-21-103, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, updating paragraph 3.1 of section three, Order of Business of the Council Meeting Rules and Procedures, by consolidating and removing certain agenda item headings. Mayor and council, this is a request to update the order of business for council voting meetings. There are currently two business items for land development actions, public hearing land development actions, and land development actions. In order to reduce confusion, staff would like to consolidate the two items into one business item entitled Land Development Actions, and if a public hearing is required on the item, that requirement would be reflected in the item's title. Staff would also like to make the same consolidations for ordinances and resolutions. Currently, we have public hearing ordinances and ordinances that would be consolidated into one business item ordinances, and then public hearing resolutions and resolutions would be consolidated into one business item resolutions. Staff would also suggest that eliminating the requests for future workshops and executive sessions. Instead, council would adopt the next year's meeting schedule at a meeting in December that would list all planned workshop and voting meetings, and it would no longer be necessary for council to make and vote on a motion each week. That concludes the presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Power, to make it clear to everybody, we still always have that option if there's a special meeting necessary or a different time, we'll still notice that as normal.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 31?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 31, resolution number R-21-103.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Aldama, a motion from Councilmember Aldama, and a second from everybody else. But we're just going to put down the Vice Mayor. To approve the recommended action, is there any discussion on a motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote? Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Request for future workshop and executive session. The previous item just passed removes the requirement to motion for a future meeting and executive session, so we can move on to the council comments and suggestions.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
Point of order, may I ask a question of the city attorney? We just adopted this resolution, but we have never adopted a calendar of meeting dates for this year. So, since we would be adopting the first calendar in December, do we still not have to notice our next meetings up until the adoption of the new calendar? City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and council member. For this evening, you have noticed it already, so you will need to do it this evening. However, moving forward, if you choose to do so, you may. However, we've already published what the meetings are for the remainder of the year, so we would be able to just do it in December. But it's your prerogative if you want to finish the year.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Aldama?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to make one announcement, recognize some individuals. We are wrapping up Hispanic Heritage Month, which started in September 15th and ended in October 15th. And a couple of things I want to thank, all of our employees of the city of Glendale, but for Hispanic Heritage Month, those Hispanic Latino members of this organization, I want to thank you for your contributions to this organization. I also want to recognize elected and appointed officials who have served the city of Glendale, and I'm going to name off a few, and I'd like to make note that five of the seven that I'm going to announce here all came from the same neighborhood, right here in the Ocatillo District. They served different communities because they were elected at large. They were all elected and appointed, and they're all Latino members of the community. And I want to thank them for their contributions in improving Glendale, making it what it is today. I want to begin with Councilmember, former Councilmember Victor Lopez, former Councilmember Joe Silva, and Vice Mayor, former Councilmember Tranquilino Garcia, former Councilmember Manny D. Martinez, and was the Vice Mayor, former Councilmember Martin D. Samanego Jr., and Councilwoman Norma Alvarez, and Councilmember Samuel Chavita. Thank you for your contributions to improving the lives of the citizens you served during your tenure, and thank you for making Glendale a better place. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to bring up three items. The first is I wish to convey our heartfelt sympathy and prayers to the family of Officer Ruiz from Avondale, who was recently killed in the line of duty, and in the most obscene way possible, he was beaten to death. This should not happen in this country. The second item is on October 19th, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM, I will be hosting my fall/winter meeting, Yucca District meeting, and it will be held at the Holiday Inn at 6151 North 99th Avenue. And the Holiday Inn is a full-service restaurant, so I've ordered light refreshments, desserts from the Holiday Inn, so come to the meeting and let's all check them out. And then lastly, congratulations, Mayor, on what I heard was an outstanding stand-up for veterans event. I'm sure you'll tell us more about it, but congratulations on another extremely successful year.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to give a shout out to some special folks within the city and other volunteers. A little over a week ago, in the Granada Estates neighborhood, over 200 volunteers came out, and what we did is a beautification effort. We painted five houses, we landscaped five yards, and did yard work in numerous other yards. And I'd like to specifically thank the Community Services Department, Jean Moreno and her people, Michelle Yates, who organized the 200 volunteers, Jamie McFarlane, Revitalization Coordinator, who helped make this happen, and of course, my council assistant, Adam Santiago. In addition to that, I'd like to thank the Faith Bible Church, Venture Church, Glendale Firefighters Charities, the Glendale Police Department, Arizona Christian University, Midwestern University, Glendale High School, Ironwood High School, Glendale Community Service Staff, and of course, our own city staff, and in addition, ABC Sand and Rock, who donated the gravel for the yards. Again, it was a very successful event. We're looking forward to doing it again, and helped out some people that would not have been able to take care of these situations, and help beautify this Glendale, Granada Estates neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I just quickly want to say thank you to staff, and especially thank you to our friends at Abrazo Arrowhead Hospital, our friends coming to Glendale, the Phoenix Children's Hospital. Thank you to our Water Services Staff for working, this took quite a lot of elbow grease to get this across the finish line, but the end result is another well in the city of Glendale. So, I just want to thank everybody involved in that. I know this process has taken a long time, and just thank staff, and also thank the people at Abrazo Arrowhead Hospital, and our new neighbors coming in hopefully pretty soon at Phoenix Children's Hospital, and all the residents up in the north part of the valley that are going to benefit from this water. So, thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I too like, Councilmember Clark, want to congratulate you, and thank you for the fine job you did with your Stand Up for Veterans. I was there again, and it was fantastic.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. And I do want to talk just a little bit about Stand Up. Now, this is the first year that we've actually participated with another organization called Stand Down, which makes things a little confusing, because if it's Stand Up and Stand Down's participating, you sit down, or roll around, or lean back, or... So, we just called it what we've always called it, it's Stand Up for Veterans. The thing, the one thing that was brought to my attention that I want all of you to know about how successful this event was, was with one gentleman. I don't know his name, I don't even know where he was from, I just know that he was a veteran. He's about, roughly about 60 years old. He was brought up to me by one of our staff, and she said, "This man would like to talk with you." And he asked me, he said, "Are you the one that put this on?" I said, "Yes, sir." And he said, "I want you to know..." And he takes his hat off, and he said, "I got a haircut today." Now, that may not sound like a big deal to most of you, but Rolf Salon, which is a Glendale business, a world-renowned styling business, and most ladies are aware of that, most of us guys don't know about that, they're there every year, and they cut his hair. And I said, "You know, that's really awesome." And then he turns around, and he points at his back, and he said, "I got a free backpack." And DoD had, gave several, several Army-issued camouflage backpacks, very expensive, very nice backpacks. And I went, "Okay, that's great." And then he points at his feet, and he said, "I also got a brand-new pair of boots." DoD also brought these boots out, 600 pairs of boots, brand-new Army-issued boots. And you know, that's wonderful, that's really great. He said, "But sir, that's not all. He said, "I got my driver's license today." And I went, "Wow." Okay, now that's a biggie. That's, that's Michelle Yates, she was just mentioned a few minutes ago. Michelle Yates was a big part of this, where she would take people that the courts would send to do community service at a Glendale park. They could do a little bit of community service, they'd bring them back, they could go back to the courts, and they could make tickets and things go away. Well, in this case, he needed his driver's license, and MBD was there, along with our courts, a lot of legal folks that were there, and they were able to get him back his driver's license. Now, keep in mind, this man's got to be close to 60, or he looks like he's 60, he's led a pretty difficult life. And I said, "You know what?" I said, "That really makes me feel good." He said, "That's awesome." And he said, "But sir, it's better than that." I'm thinking, "How can it get better than this? You got, you got a backpack, you got boots, you got your haircut, you got your driver's license." And he said, "I'm no longer homeless. Today, USFETS found a home for me, I'm no longer on the streets." And if you think about that, folks, that's amazing, that all of these volunteers that showed up to make a difference in our veterans' lives with that one man of the hundreds of people that showed up. I can only imagine how many other people got help that we'll never know about, but I can assure you, that one man by himself made it all worthwhile. He's got a job, he's got a place to live, he's got his driver's license back, and he sure likes him boots. What a great event. So, I want to thank everybody that participated. Probably the, probably the one that really, really did us the most good was Arizona Christian University. They allowed us to use their campus. They had probably 75 students on Friday to help us set everything up, and their staff was phenomenal, absolutely not second to anybody. Incredible, the amount of work and effort they put into it. So, hats off to them, along with the dozens and dozens and dozens of other people. We know, I think Ryan was telling me, we had 60-some people that are set up for employment. That's a pretty good day, don't you think? 60-some people that will have employment, that maybe didn't have employment before, along with all the other things that happened. So, I'm very, very proud of that in the future. I hope that all of you will get engaged, but more importantly, I'm hoping that across the nation, and we've already had this happen, but across the nation, other cities start trying to copy what we're doing here, and that's helping our citizens, because we can fix this problem if everybody does it together. So, I want to thank everyone that participated. Okay, I'm done rambling. With that, next, on the agenda is the citizens' comments. Council makes the opportunity available to our citizens to bring information business before this council that is not included on the printed agenda. I'd like to make sure that when you come up to speak, you state your name, the city that you live in. If it's Glendale, tell us your crossroads. If you don't know your district, if you know the district, just tell us your district. I do not want you to tell us your address, because it's not necessary. Okay? We're going to give you three minutes, so I'm going to call your name, and I'll tell who's next up on base. So, Lorraine Zomack, you're up. James Dibler, you'll be right after her.
My name is Lorraine Zomack. I live in the beautiful Ocatillo District, and I own memory lane trinkets and treasures in downtown Glendale. Well, good evening, Mayor and council. Did you know there are only 74 more days until Christmas? But downtown Glendale kicked off the holiday spirit this summer at our annual Christmas in July, and it's my pleasure tonight to give you a brief overview of this very merry day, which is part of the historic downtown Glendale Merchants Association promotions. These specialty days bring hundreds of visitors to the downtown and directly into the doors of the shops and restaurants. Our 15th Annual Christmas in July was held on Saturday, July 10th. Many of our renowned boutique stores, specialty shops, and iconic eateries featured festive treats, holiday gift ideas, and merry make-and-take crafts. Additional activities included the return of our recipe card collection, where participants followed a trail map to pick up recipe cars at participating businesses. And of course, Santa Claus came to town to greet all the kids and give them a head start on their wish lists. The Merchants Association also provided a cool and comfortable shuttle to transport event attendees throughout the area. The holiday spirit was in full swing with our back-to-school supply drive, which benefited our Glendale Elementary School District, right here in historic downtown Glendale. Our community donated so many items that we filled two carloads. It was truly a joyous day, as hundreds of people visited the downtown to celebrate Christmas. I think it was 176 days early, and about 150 degrees outdoors, but it felt cooler in downtown Glendale. As you know, Christmas in July is presented by the Historic Downtown Glendale Merchants Association, HEGMA, a merchant-driven, all-volunteer organization we formed in 2018, and we stimulate, enhance, and sustain the economic vitality and customer experience of the historic downtown Glendale Shopping and Dining District. We invite you to check out our website, you know, I have to give you that, visit downtownglendale.com, or follow us on Facebook at Historic Glendale. And I'm very excited to say, in just a few minutes, you're going to be hearing from Valerie Burner, who's going to tell you about another one of our great events, the annual Teddy Bear Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dibler, you're up, and then Valerie, you're after him.
Hi, I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, in Council District 5. There is a homeless problem at the 59th Avenue and Glen Drive Bus Stop. There are a lot of homeless people sleeping at the bus stop during the daytime. This caused problems with bus passengers waiting for the bus when they are going to school or work. Valley Metro needs to take care of the homeless problem by relocating them to the homeless shelter. Also, there is a problem with the Motel 6 property near City Hall that the business owner missed at the last city council meeting. There is a drug dealer selling illegal drugs on the motel property that Glendale Police Department needs to shut down that motel property to make sure that drug dealers doesn't come to the property again. Finally, I was not be able to make it to Glendale Stump Up for Veterans Event due to my salmon ailments. I test negative for COVID-19. Thank you for no time and consideration.
Thank you, James. Valerie, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Valerie Burner, owner of Bears &amp; More, which is located in the Ocatillo District and is just two blocks north of City Hall in the Catlin Court Shops District. Bears &amp; More will celebrate its 30th anniversary in April of 2022. We're pretty proud of that. I'm a founding member and on the executive board of the Historic Downtown Glendale Merchants Association. And tonight, I'm here to share with you some highlights from the 17th Annual Teddy Bear Day Celebration. There really is a national Teddy Bear Day, and I've been the chairperson of this specialty promotion since its inception. It was held on Saturday, September 11th. We've worked with fire police and MCSO for years, and while that's a somber day for us Americans, the consensus from them was there was no better place to spend that day than out amongst the community. Some facts and figures for you. Teddy Bear Day received nearly three dozen earned media hits. It was featured on all local television stations, including PBS, and coverage even aired on a television station in Idaho. Hundreds of people attended and participated in the many activities hosted by the downtown business community. The Free Event Shuttle was sponsored by a Valley-based business and provided a cool respite for the riders while moving them all through the downtown. This year, over 250 bears were sold, and that will translate... This year, over 250 bears were sold, and that will translate into nearly 500 being donated to the Trauma Teddy Program. These reached Glendale Fire and Police, Phoenix Fire and Police, the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, Children's Crisis Centers, and emergency rooms. And we met my goal this year, and our grand total is up over 11,000 bears donated. The Trauma Teddy Bear Program supports all first responders. Giving a child a teddy bear on what is likely their worst day ever instantly calms them and allows the first responder to better assess the child and helps them communicate. It's a proven fact, these bears are a useful tool, and they really do help kids in scary situations. Our second charitable component on Teddy Bear Day is our fundraiser, Bears &amp; More for Arizona Search Dogs. They're part of FEMA's Arizona Task Force One and get deployed to man-made disasters and natural disasters. They've helped search for both victims and survivors at the Oklahoma City bombing, the World Trade Center hurricanes, and mudslides. And this year, we raised over $2,500 for them. On average, downtown businesses saw an increase between 7% to over 25%. These specialty promotions held nearly once a month are critical revenue drivers for the downtown business community. Teddy Bear Day is produced by the Historic Downtown Glendale Merchants Association, a nonprofit, all-volunteer, membership-based organization. We currently have 76 members. We truly appreciate the opportunity to share the information about Christmas in July and Teddy Bear Day with you tonight, and are thankful for your help in promoting our downtown activities. Thank you.
You came within three seconds of your time. Perfect. Okay, there being no further business for the council, and I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting, with no objection from the council. Thank you.